We'll begin tonight's meeting, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have before us, of course, the consent agenda. We have minutes, the council minutes, February 15th this year. Park and Rec Commission, February 9th, EDA, February 14th, Utility Commission, February 23rd, and regular bills. Someone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Jim.
And I win second.
And second by Marv. Thank you. Is there any other comment or question? Yeah, all in favor say aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Alright, we're gonna begin. Your department heads, we'll have Ben first.
Ben Erickson, Fire Chief. Just got a couple things for you. About 10 after 5 today, I got a phone call, our fire truck is done. It's ready to be picked up. Tentatively, we'll head over that way next Thursday, the 10th, to have do our final inspection on the truck. And then they do a train the trainer type of a deal, so they train us how to run the run the truck. And then we come back to the department and train the rest of the department how to train it, or how to run it. We'll go over there with probably four to, four to six people and get trained on that truck, and then we'll bring it back and train the rest of the department on it. It shouldn't really be a lot of training on this truck because it's it's the identical truck to the last truck that we bought, our, our unit 20. So there won't be a lot of training as far as that goes, or anything really new for us. But it is done, it's ready for us, so we can get it back here, we'll get it into service there shortly after. The next thing I got is just a little update on our new members that we put on here last fall. They've started their firefighter one and two classes. They do that every Tuesday night. They start at 7 o'clock, they're normally done between 9:30 and 10:30. So when, well, when I leave here, I'm going over there tonight and help with that class as well. But that's going well for them as well, so. That's all I got, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Okay.
Will we have a welcome home party for this new truck, or some kind of reveal for the new truck?
I guess I hadn't thought of that, but we certainly could. I guess I probably wouldn't do it until we have the truck stocked and into service type of a deal, and then we could certainly do something. Yeah, so.
And just interesting to see the new truck, and I'm sure there's a lot of other people that would like to see how this looks. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alright, thank you, sir. Next, we're going to have John from Liquor Store.
John Nelson, Liquor Store Manager. I'm here today. Back in October, one of our community events that we do is a food drive. All food and money collected was delivered to the Cowa County, or Wyndham Area Sharing Center. And in that month of October, in store, we collected $161 in cash. Each dollar counts as three pounds of food. And then 197 pounds of non-perishable food. On top of that, we worked at the Lions Club. Lions Club made an individual $1,000 donation to the Wyndham Area Sharing Center during that month. And they also did a pancake breakfast at the fire hall where the proceeds were donated to the Wyndham Area Sharing Center as well. So that, we use that donation as, as well, which amounted in $2,228 in total cash, which three pounds of food equals 6,684 pounds of food, plus 197 pounds of food that we had, for a total of 6,881 pounds. From that, the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association does a little fun competition between stores. We're based with other stores in the million dollar above category. He wouldn't tell me how we ranked in that, but the winner of that gets a $1,000 donation. What he told me was, you did really well. So, I would guess we were in the top five. But we were randomly chosen for a $100 donation to the Wyndham Area Sharing Center. So tonight, I'm here to present the check for $100 to Christine from the Wyndham Area Sharing Center, so. This is, we do this every year, it'll be coming up in October again this year. In April, we do a animal supply drive, where we'll be collecting supplies and money for the Cowa County Animal Rescue. Kind of a similar type thing, and I think almost every time we've participated, I think we've gotten a $100 donation for those organizations, so. It's kind of a neat thing that we do for our community.
Thank you. Christine, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the manager and the staff at the Liquor Store for everything that they do for us. And for all the customers who dropped off food and helped out the sharing center, we much appreciate it.
Any of the council members? Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other department heads? We're going to continue on and go into our public hearing on the proposed one-year extension of the tax abatement period. I think we'll wait for a brief explanation first.
Drew Hagie, Development Director. So on page 32 of your packet is information regarding the potential public hearing for 1955 First Avenue, which is the Guardian Inn apartment. We discussed this at the previous meeting, and there was consensus to go from the five-year abatement to extend that one year to a six-year abatement. And we will be discussing this still with the school board. Will be on their next meeting agenda. And I shared previously that the county chose not to extend it. But tonight would be the opportunity for us to go through with holding the public hearing and decide on the one-year extension.
Alright. Anything further before we open up our public hearing? Alright. Gonna open up our public hearing on the proposed one-year extension of the tax abatement, are there any persons here in regards to that? And Steve, did we get any correspondence otherwise?
I have, I have not received any written comments, I don't believe EDA got any either.
Alright, last call for comments. I don't see anyone moving at this moment, so we're going to close our lengthy public hearing. Alright, so we have before us this resolution, and if the council members are wanting, they can ask any questions or make any comments, or even introduce.
Well, I would introduce the resolution approving the extension tax abatement period for the property.
Okay, the resolution was introduced by Marv. Do you have a second? Second by Jim. Alright, are there any other comments or questions? See any, so roll call, please.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Farreg.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Alright, the resolution passes. Thank you very much. We are going to continue on with the next thing.
The next agenda item is the TIF spending plan. Potentially looking to have a public hearing on this for the next city council meeting, which would be on March 15th. So just a little background on this. So this would be for helping to fund the Semstone Redevelopment Project. So this is where we receive the deed redevelopment grant and several other grants from Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. So those have been accepted. This funding for the project would come from existing TIF districts. Kind of how the EDA has used TIF districts and funds previously was to revolve some of these funds, so the North Wyndham Industrial Park was partially set up with funds from the TIF district from PM Beef. And that helped to pay for things there, then those funds could potentially be re, you know, reused or, you know, revolved for another project. They have to be TIF-eligible projects, and the redevelopment project is. So staff has worked with Ellers, who is our financial consultant, to talk about options and with the direction of the city council to use tax increment and no general funds. That was the direction for helping to fund the Semstone Redevelopment Project along with grants. We are able to do that. So, you know, we've went into closed session numerous times on the Semstone Redevelopment Project with the EDA Board. So we have a lot of information there. And if city council members want to meet from now until the next meeting, we also can, you know, run through a lot of that information. Have followed up with council members as well and EDA members to receive feedback. When we're looking at the Semstone Redevelopment Project, we would want to revolve these funds again, so if we chose to utilize the funds from the North Wyndham Industrial Park and use those for the Semstone Redevelopment Project, after you pay out TIF to the developer for the apartment and TIF for the subdivision, there would be excess TIF increment in this district. We estimate around $2.4 million of excess TIF increment after 20 years. So when you're thinking about that, that is a very positive aspect of the project. You'd be going from a property that pays or produces about $5,500 in taxes to when the property is built out for the west phase, you're talking about 196,000 of annual tax revenue. So that's a big change for this property. So I'm gonna have Steve go up a little bit to some of the graphics first here, so we can talk a little bit about that, so. Down one, so we previously produced, oh, down a little bit, one more. Yeah, the, the aerial, so. We previously had these renderings done, so, you know, so people at home, you're looking at this, the DNR grant covers the 10-acre Prairie Project. That would be for wellhead protection, that would be property that the Utility Commission would utilize for wellhead protection and open space. You also received grants from the Department of Health for purchasing that property. And then the deed grant, you know, covers the demolition of the plant. And then remaining concrete and the industrial that's there. So when you're looking at this project, you know, you have that large increase in tax base, but you also have those other benefits of wellhead protection, lake protection, pedestrian safety. And we're also retaining the business in the North Wyndham Industrial Park. That is a big part of this, especially for the EDA. You know, the EDA is here to, you know, grow tax base, support existing businesses and attract new. So we're supporting Semstone by helping them relocate. And by doing that, also increasing tax base here. If you go down a slide there. So just some high-level information, you know, there's potential for seven lake lots in the west phase, and that's what we've been talking about with the subdivision developer, which is Voss Plumbing and Heating of Painesville. That's who the EDA selected to work with on a development agreement. That development agreement would go to the EDA on the March 14th meeting. And then that development agreement would have to be adopted by the city council as well. There's some prairie lots, those back lots that are part of this as well, along with the lot for the apartment and some potential twin homes or duplexes north of the well. If you go down to the next page, please. So, looking at our, you know, funding for this, this is kind of lays out how, where we would come up with the funds to buy the property. So we are selling property to Semstone in the North Wyndham Industrial Park. We have some funds from TIF District 1-17 and TIF District 1-19. 17 is the fast side of the North Wyndham Industrial Park, and 19 is the toral side of the North Wyndham Industrial Park. When we're looking at this, the payment to Semstone is $1,150,000. And then we would be selling property in the North Wyndham Industrial Park to Semstone for $102,060. So everything is laid out, this is what we would, are proposing to do at this point. And part of our payment plan is utilizing the tax increment. And to do that, we have to utilize the TIF spending plan. So the next page is the west phase of the proposed South Cottonwood Lake subdivision. There is potential to have the Bossart property come into that as well, which is where the mouse is there, there'd be four lake lots and four back lots, but at this point, we're talking seven lake lots, four back lots, and then four potential twin home duplex lot north of the well, and then south of the well accessing off Cottonwood Lake Drive is the proposed market rate apartment. So, part of the TIF spending plan also is thinking about the TIF-eligible improvements. Working with the subdivision developer, they would be investing over a million dollars of infrastructure into this property, for, for sewer water streets. That is a, you know, large investment for a private developer to make, but then they get to market the lots. So the EDA is using the property to help get the project done, but then we're not the one that's going out and bidding the project and putting in all the infrastructure. We're partnering with a private developer to decrease the risk to the EDA and city. We are, at this point, not discussing any debt for the project, we're able to finance this through the funds that the EDA have, and then funds through the TIF spending plan. So we would be able to do that, so the original direction from the council was just not to use general fund dollars. We're originally looking at having to bond for the project and utilize that tax increment to pay off the bond. Especially when you get new builds to occur out there, that tax increment, you know, jumps up quite a bit. And with the funds that we have available, we can finance this as how we have it laid out at this point. I did mention previously that, you know, there would be some funds that go to the subdivision developer. That is primarily for the lift station and backup generator. And then there would be funds that are comparable to Lakeside Apartment. That would be going to the apartment developer, which is Apollo Development. You may recognize that name, they're the ones that worked on the American, so they do have, you know, some experience working in Wyndham. So when we go through this, the TIF spending plan, we'd be looking at utilizing $550,000 of excess TIF increment from TIF District 1-19. And to do that, we have to hold the public hearing to discuss the TIF spending plan. In the packet, the TIF spending plan is on page 43. And this was developed, 43, 44, and this was developed by Ellers, and it does explain that, you know, we can utilize these funds for this redevelopment project, we can utilize it for, you know, incentivizing new single-family and multifamily housing in this area. So if there's any questions, I can answer them, hopefully. Or else we can discuss the potential of having a public hearing and the next city council meeting on March 15th.
Do any council members wish to ask any questions?
I realize that there is quite a few benefits to moving this project forward. But one of the things that seems to get overlooked quite a bit is the fact of moving a concrete plant off of Wyndham's aquifer. Because it's, it's really hard to quantify that value. You don't have a problem until you do have a problem. And then how do you undo it if you have an issue with a concrete wash in your water system? So it definitely makes sense to keep moving this project forward to solve some more of our housing issues.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright. We have to do a motion first.
Yeah. Resolution and calling for the public hearing.
Just the resolution first, guys. We do have that resolution before us concerning the public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to introduce that?
I would introduce the resolution calling for a public hearing by the City of Wyndham on the proposed TIF spending plan for tax increment financing district number 1-19.
Alright, resolution was introduced by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jenny. Any further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Farreg.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Alright, and now we need to move on to that second part, no, that's something else, nevermind. Yes.
Yep, so the second agenda item there underneath the call for public hearing is this regular housing tax abatement public hearing. So this is through the Cottonwood County Home Initiative for a new home to be built at 1965 Norway Avenue. That is in, in your packet on page 45. This home at 1945, or 1965 Norwood Avenue, the estimated five-year tax abatement for the city is $5,610, $1,122 per year. Everything was complete for the application, and that will be going to the county and school district as well. And we'd be looking for the public hearing on this to be set for the March 15th EDA Board meeting as well.
Alright, is there anyone who wishes to introduce this resolution?
I'll introduce this resolution.
Introduced by Jenny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yep.
Quaid.
Yes.
Farreg.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes. And that resolution goes forward. Alright, thank you. Alright, we're on to the next item, and Andy Spielman will be here coming forward.
Good evening, Andy Spielman, Building and Zoning Official. So I've included in your packet this evening a memo, this is not an action item, it's just for information purposes. And this is regarding our city code review. As the memo states, just a little bit of background here, the this is something we've been working on for a couple years already, actually, through budgeting process. The council did budget money in 2020 and 2021 to hire a consultant, a professional consultant, to review our land use code. It's chapters 151 and 152 of our city code, which is gonna cover all of the zoning districts, subdivisions, planned unit developments, the wetland, shoreland, floodplain ordinances would all be included in that, but we're kind of leaving those alone. Last year, we had to update our floodplain management code because we had to adopt the new map, so that one is recent as of last September. So those aren't included in this. So we, we, after we had money budgeted for that, we sent out requests for proposals. We received several responses to that and interviewed and had presentations by three or four of those to the Planning Commission. And on April 13th, the Planning Commission recommended the council hire Bolton and Mink as our consultant for code review. And we've really been working on this since that time. Planning Commission has reviewed several sections of code, so what you're gonna see this evening is kind of just an overview of how the process is working, what we're getting, what the Planning Commission and staff is seeing, how we're reviewing it, and then we'll kind of discuss a little bit moving forward, the timeframe and how involved the council wants to be in, in the process. So there was an attachment. If you had a chance to look over this, it, it looks pretty pretty detailed. It's not quite as bad as it looks. But what, what this is, is what we get from the consultants, so all of the highlighting is color-coded per basically per person who's working on it, and then their comments are in the sidebar on the right. So this first part here is, is really just kind of their internal review, the first thing they did was look at our code pretty broadly and just kind of started highlighting things that they had questions with, highlighting things that maybe they thought seemed different in our code compared to other ones that they see and ones that they had questions on. For instance, they, so they highlighted the, the nine zoning districts and the four special overlay districts. It's not a recommended change, it's not saying that anything is gonna change, that's just them going through their review and making sure that the text of our code matches the map that we have, basically. A lot of this is highlighting things that they've saw repetitiveness or redundancies in our code, where we, where we say the same thing in several different places of our code. Sometimes that's okay, oftentimes that leads to confusion, misinterpretation, or just lengthy code. That happens a lot as you amend code over the course of 20-plus years. So I think we'll just kind of go through and I'll hit some of the highlights. This first part is really just kind of their review. If we get to page four, we come to this site plan requirement. This is brand-new language that, that the consultant is recommending that we adopt, this whole new code section. They're calling it site plan requirements, and it's things that we would want to see when somebody submits a site plan. And really what they're gonna do is consolidate several other sections of our code into this. So in our subdivision code, there's a list of things that we want them to submit, in our planned unit development code, there's a list of things we want them to submit. Instead of listing all those things in three, four, or five other places of our code, it'll simply say a site plan per this section. It's meant to add consistency and clarity, and then, again, eliminate some redundancies. If we go to page seven, this is where we're getting into the, each individual zoning district, so we're really getting into now the permitted uses and conditional uses for each zoning district, lot size requirements and things like that. I will say that, other than AO, we're not looking at changing any of the lot size dimensions. So there's, there's some things that are gonna be kind of consolidated into different tables and charts, it may look like there's some changes, but there's, there's no talk of changing anything as far as lot sizes and, and things like that. So if we go to page seven, under, where is it, permitted uses, and then conditional uses. So we see an addition of wind energy conservation systems, these would be the wind towers, wind turbines. We've added those as a conditional use in AO. And this is the first time we see that, this is gonna pop up in a few other code sections down the line. The reason for that is in our current code right now, we just say that wind energy conservation systems are allowed as a conditional use in all areas of the city. And the consultant and planning commission agreed that maybe these wouldn't be very appropriate in residential districts. Possibly our downtown square area, not that there would be a a place for one of those, but it, it seemed more appropriate to to list them as a conditional use in the districts we felt they were appropriate. So, that's, that's something that's, we see it here for the first time. Like I say, that, that's going to pop up later on in the code, too. If we scroll down just a little bit, we get to the yard and lot requirements. The minimum lot area, this is the one that we're proposing changing from seven thousand square foot minimum to twelve, and that's just something the consultant saw. And you can see in their comment on the right, the minimum lot area is smaller than for R1. Their thought was that AO is your ag, open space district. That's where you should have your larger country feeling lots, and they felt it'd be more appropriate to be consistent with the R1 requirement there. We'll scroll down a little bit more, and we see on page ten here that we've deleted the, a little bit of language there, that whole section there where it says home occupations, that's been deleted. The reason for that is because we're moving that out of this section and into the permitted and conditional uses section, wherever it's appropriate with the zoning district, whether it's a permitted use or conditional use. The garage space and sheltered off street parking, we're taking it out of the text, and then you can see right above there, we're adding it into the chart. So, this is something that's going to be consistent with every zoning district now moving forward, too, is we're, we're adding more information into the chart and we're removing text. Charts and tables are a little bit easier to follow through than, than long text, and then, again, it eliminates some confusion and some redundancies. So, it, it looks like a lot of changes, but it's, it's more just kind of shifting and consolidating the language. So, a lot of this now, moving forward, we're going to see a lot of the same things with the deleting this, certain sections, and then amending the, the chart. Think we'll skip down to page thirteen then. Oh, yeah, this is a good one here. So, page thirteen must be under conditional uses, possibly. Let's see, I got to find it on mine. We're under conditional uses. It's, yeah, it's down a little bit farther. It's right above the chart. No, next one. We're on twelve, right there. Nope, top of this page. Sorry. Right, there we go. Way at the top of the page, conditional use L. We've struck the word churches, and we've inserted places of assembly. That's another one we're going to see all over in our code. Not specifically with churches, but this is one that we see in a lot of our, our sign chapter and a lot of our zoning districts. So, that's just a simple definition change. We're, we're really no longer allowed to call them churches. They're a place of assembly. So, there's going to be, that's, that's one thing that the consultant was, was really helpful with, was going through and finding a lot of those things that have, have been known to cause problems with, with other cities' codes or where other cities have been challenged on, on certain things as far as legalities go. So, that's one, I just wanted to highlight that because we're going to see that change a lot in our code and, and in several zoning districts. So, it's, it's not eliminating a use, it's just calling it something different. Page sixteen, we're getting into our R2 zoning district, under conditional uses here, and we've, we've changed a little bit with, again, just kind of the wording and how we're doing things here. We've, we've struck mixed uses, and we've added neighborhood commercial as a conditional use. Mixed uses really leaves it wide open to really any use, as long as you're, it's a mixture of uses in buildings. Neighborhood commercial is going to be a little bit more restrictive, but it's, it's really going to narrow it down to a use that's a small-scale commercial and something that's beneficial to the neighborhood that it's in. So, that's language that's going to come up here in a few other code sections as well. So, we'll see that, that change kind of consistent through some of the other districts also. Page twenty, we're probably getting into R3 multifamily, and we're going to see that change. We're going to see mixed uses added here as well, and then we're adding mixed-use structures. So, there's kind of two ways we're, we're going to, we're going to look at doing this. There will be mixed-use structures where there's kind of like how the, the area around the square is now with business on the main floor and residential on the second floors. And then there will be mixed-use lots where you might have a lot that has different types of buildings, different types of uses in those buildings. So, we're adding that mixed use. And then also, we have that neighborhood commercial in the R3 zoning district as well. And there you see our churches changed to places of worship again, so, places of assembly, Page twenty-two is our B1. This is, there's only about four blocks of our town, and that's right north of the area right around the square here. So, it is pretty limited. This is, the purpose of this zone is really as a mixed-use, a transition zone between residential and business. We don't see a lot of changes there. Think we'll keep going down to, no, I'm sorry. We do see a few changes there with bed and breakfast, neighborhood commercials, mixed-use structures, things like that, again, are being added as conditional uses here to be consistent with things that we would allow in residential, we would probably want to allow in the B1 transition zone. So, trying to be consistent there. Page twenty-seven, we're in our B2 zoning district, which is the highway business district. We're under the conditional use permits, and this is where we did make a few changes with some of the uses that we're, we're going to consider being allowed in that district. We've, we've deleted or we've struck single-family housing as a conditional use in the highway business district, and we've also deleted the livestock sales, auction centers, and confinement buildings as a conditional use there. We've added that use back into one of our industrial zones. We just felt it to be more appropriate there than, than right along the highway. And single-family residential, we've, we've really just deleted that here. We've added back into this the mixed uses, so there is the possibility for a mixed-use development, but to just tie up a lot in the highway corridor for a single-family house didn't seem appropriate or consistent with what we, what we would want to see on the Page thirty-one, we're getting into our B3, which is the area right around the square, and we've added in mixed uses. Here, we've added them in as a permitted use. We've also made some changes in the conditional use here. We've, we've eliminated a few things such as light manufacturing, automotive sales, service, and repair are two things, car washes. The downtown square area is more an area where you'd want to be walkable, office-based, mixed-use things, so we didn't necessarily feel that was probably what we would want to see as new development around the square, felt there were other places where we would allow that and, and want to encourage that. So, those are some of the changes we made there. Page thirty-eight, we're getting into our industrial zones, I1, in the conditional uses. This is where we see, again, wind energy conservation systems. So, we've added them back into the AO and then into our industrial zones. These, that D there, impound lots for storage of inoperable vehicles, that was a change that's already been made. It just hasn't been incorporated into the code, so we're going to use, take advantage of this to, to make that change, but that's something that we've, we've worked on in the past and, and has actually already been approved by council. If we get into I2 on page forty-one, this is going to be our I2 heavy industrial conditional uses, and that's where we see the livestock sales, auction centers, and confinement buildings back there. I will say the planning commission has reviewed all of these. There was quite a bit of talk, mostly on the mixed use and the mixed-use structures. I believe we're going to have to refine that a little bit more. I think there will be a special section in our code to kind of define a little bit what those are and maybe regulate things like the, the main floor needs to be consistent with the zoning district and then additional floors. In a lot of codes that I see, there's this floor-area ratio that they do. It's, I, I don't have my head wrapped around it yet, and I don't know if we want to get that involved with ours, but that's, that's something a lot of communities do as far as trying to, trying to handle their mixed use and then what the ratio of, of the different types of uses are within a building. So, there's, there's a lot of work to come yet. None of this has been approved. None of it's been adopted, but it just gives you an example of what, what we have done with it, the work the commission and the consultants have done. Moving forward, what I've tried to do with the commission is break it down into sections about this large and, and go through it that way. We've pretty well worked through most of the code sections. Next on our agenda will be the subdivision code and then planned unit developments. I don't see a lot of change with planned unit developments, other than maybe some of the submittal requirements and the processes for handling them, trying to streamline some of those. Probably the same thing with subdivisions, cleaning up some, some repetitiveness in our text, some confusing language in our text, and trying to streamline the process a little bit. I'm hoping to maybe go through a few of those in March. It's looking like our March meeting for planning commission is going to be pretty busy. We have a couple of public hearings lined up already, so that may kick it into April. But the overall goal is to probably have a public hearing where we would invite the council and the planning commission as kind of a joint meeting where the consultants would be onsite and have that open to the public as well, more of a informal, but it will be a meeting, public hearing-type setting where we can really go through the entire That, I'm hoping, will happen sometime early fall, August, maybe. That would give us September and October to clean up, finish the rest of the language. We would be able to go through our two readings and publish before the end of the year. We normally send our code out to be codified sometime at the end of the year, first part of the following year. I'd like to have all of this done and incorporated by then. The consultant is more than comfortable with that. They feel we can push that schedule if we need to. I think, I think right now, we're, we're on track to do that, though, and not feel rushed in any way. With what we've seen tonight, does the council have any questions?
It's pretty exciting stuff. Where, how are you addressing commercial and residential, solar? Where does that show up in here?
It's not going to show up here anywhere. We have a, we have a whole section in our code for wind energy conservation and a whole another section for solar. And I'd have to look for sure, but I think solar is allowed in any zoning district under those conditions. That's how wind was, and we just, we really didn't think we'd want to see wind towers popping up in somebody's backyard. So, we, we kind of backed off on those, but I think solar, we left alone where, under those conditions and provisions, they're just generally allowed, possibly as a conditional use permit, but.
Anyone else? All right. As I understand, there's no action, of course, tonight, but in the future.
In the future. Process moving forward then is presentation like this, this length, this kind of information, this detail, is that how the council wants to? So, this has basically been reviewed by staff, consultant, planning commission, and this is narrowed down pretty close to, we think, what the final will be. Do we, do we want to see all of the sections kind of like this moving forward, or do you want to just wait till that kind of joint meeting in the end with the consultant and get it all at once?
Looks like Mr. Grunig can wait. Anyone else? I think Lisa probably wants all the nitty-gritty, but she's willing to wait. Okay. Very good. Yeah. Looks like there's a consensus to wait till it's all together. Thank you, sir.
That works. Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number six. We don't have anything to report tonight, but I was reminded that we still have openings for the park and rec and for telecom, and there, there's a possibility we may have someone for planning and zoning, but that is still to be announced by the mayor. So, we'll get back to you on that. We're going to go into new business. Is there any new business? All right. Doesn't seem like there's any. We do have one thing for old business, and that is the ad hoc committee, which is related to the library slash community center. And just wanted to read to you just briefly, a little thing here. We're talking about the committee, the, the two from the community center, two from the library, and then Councilwoman Quaid and myself, being on this ad hoc committee, talking about the purpose of the actual committee, making sure that we determine a schedule so we have, you know, some direction going forward, go and tour the community center, talk about activities and users and services and all that stuff, talk about budgets, commonalities, opportunities, maybe pro-con. What does the future look like if we go forward? Complimentary activities, that could happen from both the library and the community center, how to expand services, programming, building issues. And so, that is kind of the scope that we're looking at. Are there any questions from the council? Any comments? All right. All right. I guess we're going to move on to council comments. I'll start with Councilwoman Farreg.
Board of Equalization.
Oh, yes, of course. Yes. Thank you. Yes, we have a Board of Equalization meeting coming up. That would be, there's a notice that was sent out. That's Monday, the ninth of May, 2022. It'll be at four thirty to five here at the Wyndham City Hall. So, anyone who that may affect will know that. And of course, that'll be on the website as well, I assume.
And Councilmember Grunig is our only trained individual. I think we sent that out for folks, but nobody jumped on it, so let's hope Marv is here that day, so.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that reminder. Now, we'll move on to council comments, and we'll start with Councilwoman Farreg.
Hi. I'd like to let everyone know that on Sunday, March thirteenth, there is going to be a Dad's Belgian Waffle Brunch held at the community center, and this is put on by the hospital. It is going to be from nine thirty to one, and it will be ten dollars for adults and five dollars for children, and children under age of five will eat free. There will be takeout available as well, and it is pay-at-the-door only, so there's no advance tickets to be purchased. And this year's event profits will go towards the purchase of the emergency department continuous patient monitoring system. So, hopefully, everyone will go out and enjoy the Dad's Belgian Waffles. And also, I have, this is a little bit in advance, but they are having a community blood bank drive that's going to be held on April first at the Wyndham Area Hospital, and due to the COVID restrictions, they are asking that you make appointments ahead of time. And the number for that would be six zero five three three one three two two two. And they are in desperate need for type O blood. However, they, they are also, you know, in need of the other types as well, but O is like the top one that they really need. You can also call the lab as well to make an appointment at eight three one zero six five five five. You can also call the lab as well to make an appointment at 831-0655. And I did have one more, sorry. There's going to be a food drive that's at the hospital from March 6th, through the 20th. I'm sorry, through the 12th. Sorry, my phone worked out. And food items can be placed in boxes located at the main hospital and rehab wellness entrances. And cash donations should be given to the registration at the main hospital entrance. They're asking for canned goods, non-perishable food items, and cash donations. So, and it'll be split between the Cottonwood County Sharing Center. Sorry, can't read the other one. But anyway, hopefully, people could go and donate at the hospital and help out the local community. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Councilwoman Quaid.
I don't have anything. I was on vacation, and now I'm back. I tried to bring the warm weather from the Dominican Republic back to Wyndham, so hopefully, we have all this melting because I've tried to bring the sunshine back.
We do appreciate it. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Grunig? All right, Councilwoman Nelson?
I guess I just want everybody to get in touch with their higher powers and hope that calmer heads will prevail in this business in Europe and also here at home. Things are going on that could possibly go real bad in a hurry.
All right, Ms. Nesme.
Well, Councilmember Sherman and I are going to the Coalition of Minnesota Cities Lobbying Day tomorrow. With the state's $9.3 billion surplus, I think we're going to take one of the department dump trucks from the street shop and see if we can fill it. But we will be asking for some dollars for some projects that are going on and will benefit our community. So if you had any particular, please let Jason or I know before tomorrow. But we'll have our discussion with our legislators on local government aid and some of the other things that are important to us. There is some discussion about some street shop or small cities funding for streets. With the surplus, they're looking at possibly dedicating some auto parts, sales tax revenues to streets. They've used parts of that funding in the past to do one-time funding a couple of times, but they're talking about possibly a dedication. So we'll see how some of those things back, go and report back to you and so.
Yes, what a, what a privilege in our society to actually have some contact with those who represent us. So what a great thing. Thank you for joining us tonight. And with that, we'll adjourn by unanimous consent.